The night when he's in, you don't sleep. I wonder who will wake him, bring him to his feet. Speak now, or forever hold your peace. There's a night when he's in, you don't sleep. I wonder who will wake him, bring him to his feet. Speak now, or forever hold your peace.
I'd like to call for the November 9th, 2021 work session of the Mayor and Council. I want to call on Councilman Tim Carroll to lead us a prayer to be with that standing to the left.
That's right. Heavenly Father, we come tonight and thank you for all the blessings that you've provided to us individually and as a city. We ask that you keep your calm hand on this meeting tonight and that we have a good, positive benefit from all the citizens and all the work that we have for us. We ask for all this in your Son Jesus's name, amen.
My pledge to you is to defy the headless state of the American, to reform which stands one nation, a country, God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
First item on the agenda is a special presentation by John Robinson, by George Boston-Rodzien, by Gary McNeil. Gentlemen, if ten minutes is enough for the presentation, I'll set it at ten minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, gentlemen.
I'm John Robinson, 327 San Jose Circle of Lake Park, Georgia. First and foremost, I want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to be able to come before you this evening with this presentation, and again, thank you. I am a representative and a member of the People's Tribune and the Black Business Association. I'm here this evening to speak on the issues pertaining to the formation of a partnership between the City of Allosa and the People's Tribune. I do understand that from some council member that there might be some hurdles with this, but I don't see where it should be nothing that should interfere to the point that that we should be able to move forward and have a pretty decent relationship. I do sincerely believe that this could be a wonderful, potential relationship. By sharing our ideas and truly being a part of a progressive city, a city without limits, it says on our towers around the city. A city where it has no limitations as to when it goes to progression. But the progression seems to be only for an elite group of people. It always seems that if the money is being spread abroad in a manner that that's not appropriate to everyone in the city. A city without limits. When it comes to sharing the power of the upper echelons of businesses, it seems that the same people always get contractors and this kind of thing. I didn't come here to condemn or badger, but to promote an idea, an idea that can lead to a better Valdosta. One that can share its limitations since it's a city without limits. A dream, a vision, a hope. We was told in a meeting that when we come here to speak to you guys, we need to bring a vision. A vision of something that can be inspirational instead of just coming up here actually making a certain request. But we bring a dream, a vision of hope. Hope for the homeless, the jobless, and the hopeless people that's in this city. A city that's 53% black, where 40% live below poverty, and 43% of the 53% earn less than $10,000 a year. That's falling, something very wrong with that. It's breeding around the bloodlords, gang members, criminal activities, and abnormal behavior. You know, in this community, we still have communities like the name Kill Me Quick. Is that an example of how we want this city to be disobeyed when it comes to people coming here to invest? A community called Kill Me Quick. What kind of name does that have for a community? Who in their right mind would invest in a community that's called Kill Me Quick? How long can you sit there on the board knowing that you got a community name with such a name, Kill Me Quick? Knowing that no one is going to invest in a community like that? Then you got one called Little Miami that reflects the, some of the worst areas of Miami. We need to have an adjustment change in the heart of the mind, in the way we think, and the mentality of minds that we have when we're governing this city. We want this partnership to be able to be a bridge that can bridge that gap. That can be the gap of the separation of a social divide. Let's come together and see if we work together, at least for once, as a unified city. You don't have to like me, and I don't have to like you, but we do have to share it together in the activities of this city. We can work together, we can get it done, we can do it, it's not a question about that. We propose to the city, if we get this partnership, we're going to ask the city to request the federal government $250 million to revitalize the South Side. So that we can get the old businesses firing back up. Money's for the city, not for the People's Tribune. And we want to have a governing body that can have membership committees that can help monitor the city without having the power that we always share here. We always have been excluded, and we need some inclusion. As far as my public records that I made the request on, they were, some of them was quite suspicious. I'm concerned about them. You know, I pray that we can be honest with one another. Out of the list of contractors, we have contractors that was used repeatedly, then repeatedly, then repeatedly, then repeatedly, then some of the same contractors get the money all the time. And we need to see if we can change that. I urge you to consider us being a part of this city. We like to be in partnership with the city, and we believe that it can be done. And hopefully, that in that town, we are thought, the way we think. We don't have to be so socially divided, but we got to be able to talk, raw talk, not walk around with eggshells. Not covering things up in a veil. We got to be open with one another. Valdosta have a ugly picture that have been painted of its history. We all want to go out of that. We can get beyond those hurdles. When you built the Patterson Bridge, it kept one half of the city. And those businesses down there was thriving businesses, and they need to be revitalized. And we want to be able to be a part of that, to have a voice in it, and praying that we can move forward as far as this partnership. This concludes my part of it. And I urge you to consider us being partners regardless of what differences that we may have. Like I say, you do not have to like me, I do not have to like you, but in outside of God, we all are the same people. And we got to look out for everybody, but we have a city that's 53, 510, 53% black, and people earning less than $10,000 a year. That's definitely need to change, and that's the need to change, and we're the ones that can change that. And we're going to be petitioning to the federal government, federal funds. Thank you so much for this part of the presentation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Go to your dinner, go to your. I want to tell you, that long he was a major. I was going to use the base was what the impediments J. Ford had already returned about the city, but I'm not going to get into that. The record of Valdosta goes way back, and some people in the city believe that Valdosta's rolling just fine, there's no problems. Just a bunch of lazy, shitless people who don't want to get out of the mud. Some people see that, and I hear that, even on radar sometimes. I'm going to be brief, but I have a collage of documentation about unfairness, and I'm talking about with black folk. A lot of white folk tell me, give me documents about Valdosta, ugly historic past. I have a running document, a lot of it came from white people, from white pastors, when I got here to invite them to their home. I'm not a hard man to get along with, this is why I publish that information. I'm hoping that Valdosta can move forward without any real litigation of coming out with the historic path leading back to what happened during the colonialism, what they did to and things. Back in the days, this book here, I don't know if you all read it or not, I had a stroke for 14 years, and I sold this book, and I still have a few of them in the house. William H. Hazen, in this book, he highlights what they had to fight for here in Valdosta, to get rid of the wards, this, and they were successful. And a lot of other information, I'm not going to talk about that, but I see you all have a long agenda, that's what they can be off to. So I'm just going to quit here, but I don't know if he gave you all the highlight from the attorney of the plan, but we do have some attorneys that already have stated that what's going on here violates possibly federal law, and it's sad they violated from this B-SAD program, not under you, but under some of the others. We are trying our best to get some of those contracts. A lot of them on council, especially the blacks, they'll tell us what's going on behind closed doors, but up here, where you need to make a difference, is when you need to make the difference. I know, we technically own government through all of it, and I'm asking you all to just do the right thing, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council.
George, let me.
Good evening, good evening, everyone, friend. Before we get started, or at least I say my portion, I would like to ask, as we recognize a moment of silence, one of our comrades that is no longer with us has gone on a glory, that is Pastor Terry Kelly, one of the forebears of what we're doing here, he has gone on, so wait for about two, three seconds, you will offer a moment of silence in his absence.
Amen. So I have a thing for you, as my two comrades said, as a person who's offered an opportunity to correct some wrongs. There is a growing trend in American cities, it is the same across the United States, especially in major metropolitan cities. First, black neighborhoods and the spending of black infrastructure is totally diminished, it's not existing. When I arrived here 16 years ago in Valdosta, some of the same popes that are in the streets, right down on Lee Street, right down in Patterson, are still there. I can count where they are. Every time I go down Gordon, I cross over that little hump right there, Gordon-Patton, it's the same horizon. I know that my car's come elevating, for 16 years I've elevated, and every lane, like going from Duke on the Duke's Hazard. That lets me know that there are some infrastructure issues. The second trend is the amount of city government spending is extremely lopsided. As my comrades stated when we pulled the numbers, just from what few numbers you gave us, it was less than 2% of spending in the black neighborhoods and the black community in relationship to 98% of spending everywhere else with the king of public spending. That itself, that in and of itself speaks to disenfranchisement that our own city government is placing upon the people. When you were elected in office, you were elected to represent a total Valdosta. As my comrades said, we may never get along, we may sit on opposite sides of the table today, and tomorrow, we may see things the same way the day after that. But we are all human beings, we're all God's creation, all God's children. We need to change Valdosta. What have we done? We followed the monies. Which neighborhoods are getting loans, which neighborhoods are not getting loans, are not being given to? Where's the mission-driven spending at? Where's the public spending in these neighborhoods typically for what I've seen in the last 16 years? I haven't been here as long as some of you have, but for the last 16 years, one section of town seems to get absolutely no help. We are at a very integral, we're at a very pivotal point with what Joe Biden has done in giving us the American Rescue Plan. For whatever reason, people like or dislike it, the point is, monies have been given now to help those that are disenfranchised, to help those that are down and impoverished. Here in Valdosta, Georgia, right now, we have children living in hotels, and they're calling other residents. We have children that are living in cars right now, and we have money in our government that can rescue those families, that can give them a loan, and we haven't done anything. We have children right now who don't need a food meal. Your children just came right there in the shelters that I deliver food to, and other pastors deliver food to. But I just walked into a room full of children that were eating leftover chili mat for a restaurant, that a restaurant donated to the shelter. And we eating punch bowl cake, and we were sprouting around trying to find Pepsi's and Sprite to get them to eat. We're, we've got to do better. What have we found? That disparities in neighborhoods and investments are alarming. In my opinion, evidence of what could be potential supplanting, while I'm not accusing you of that, the remnants of supplanting, which ironically is a federal offense, seems to be evident somewhere in the local spending, is the reason that we're pulling all these numbers. You cannot have money budgeted in one place. Remove those monies and take special spending money and place it in those plates, in that place, and then use that other money to spend other places. We need to see our infrastructure fortified, and not just the typical businesses, but we need to see all of Valdosta fortified. We need to see a reinvestment in the black community. We're the only community. Here's the trend that happens in every city. Less spending is done in the black community. And when the black community finds a reason to point where it's just about to fall apart, then the same city government that did not spend in the community comes by and says, "Look how nasty this community looks, look how bad it was, maybe we want to do something to revitalize it." And the word beautify and the word revitalize is a code word for gentrify. Because by the time these cities began finish beautifying and revitalizing these neighborhoods, the faces of people who live in those neighborhoods no longer exist. And simply put, those people that were once there are now picked up and moved to a new location, and a nuisance of poverty is created. Ever since I've been a child, the railroad tracks have always divided the city. On one side of the tracks, spending always occurs, and on the other side of the track, spending does not occur. Valdosta is no different. The railroad tracks divide this city in half, and on one side of the tracks, the closest thing that I've seen when it comes to Fry Street and the formal revitalization has been to come into a project and to change the front of the buildings to appear to match the demographics of the neighborhood. And even then, that project wasn't finished. Only 75% of that project was started, and there's still projects that haven't even been touched. Some of these buildings are, were built in the 60s and 70s, when Kraken Build was still going. I heard about Kraken Build way back in, in the 80s, way, way back from my friends that were from Valdosta, I played football with, how it was a thriving business and just pushed out of the neighborhood, and when that happened, that section of town lost everything that made it what it was. I would certainly petition you tonight to take your effort to partner with us to come up with a way to rebuild that section of town, my section of town. Now, let me take a step further, make it even more personal, my people's section of town, because we are hurting. It's like watching someone drown in water, and you have the ability to reach out and grab them, and yet we stand there with our hands out of pockets and we philosophize as to why they're drowning. Well, simply put, our job is to reach out and to grab that man and put him out of the water. Now, we partner with Attorney Wardle, and you may not know him, but I know him pretty well. He's very adamant about this, he's, one of his things that he does is he, he has attempted to make a difference in the office. And when he sees this form of disenfranchisement occurring, he steps in to help those people that have been knocked down get back up. So our reason for coming here tonight is to not come with a fist, or to swing a bat, or an axe, or to say, "Give me money because we're black." That's not the issue, because that's what the newspaper are writing. What we're pointing out is the disparities that have occurred in this community, and the amount of spending that occurs in this city when it comes to the black community and everyone else. We get less than 2% of the money. So we're asking now that we've pounced this thing out, and we find a way to make it, that the equity and equivalent of what's right be the same across the board, the same opportunities, the same spending. Now, what Attorney Wardle has done is, one of the things that's going to happen, what we've done is, we're looking at what is the opportunity of geography? How can we help make Valdosta better? But he's pulling the numbers of the thing that's occurred over the last 20 years, and we're pointing out the anomalies. And we're first asking to partner with you to correct these things, not go back and change yesterday if we don't have to. We can't put the bullet back in the gun, but we can come up with a new strategy. And if that approach doesn't work, then his next approach is litigation. I can tell you just alone, I, when I pulled the numbers, I can see some things that just made me cringe. I can show you one of the previous budgets where there was money set aside for streets in the black community. And there was a projection to spend money on different streets. Then all of a sudden, at the last minute, all that money was gathered away and pushed towards Woodrose. That's the typical trend in Valdosta. A projection, a plan, it sounds good in a meeting, and then sometime later on, all eyes are off the spending. Monies moved around and put in different places where they shouldn't be. You take, for instance, right behind, right behind New Hope Mission Baptist Stretches, right there off Gordon Street. Here you have on a dare, a wooden bridge that's still inside the city limits, inside the neighborhood. I'm just waiting for that bridge to fall in and for someone to get hurt. I've had someone go out and look at that bridge, and they seem to think it should probably not be utilized anymore, that it's outdated. We've been talking about that bridge forever today. These are things that, and I'm going to end here, I spent some time with the city manager, myself and John Robinson, we spent some time with the city manager about three, four years ago. And one of our objectives was to do the same thing we're doing here tonight, asking you to partner with us to correct these anomalies. And the most I could get out of him was that. Have you seen Wiesel Baker? Have you seen the needles that are on the ground? Have you seen how dangerous it is back here? Have you seen the trash? Well, my wife, my family, and I searched it one Saturday, and we went down there, and we picked up paper. Well, it made me wonder. You're the city manager of Valdosta, and after all this time, I've been here 16 years, and I've seen the destruction that's occurred in the neighborhood, and not from the people that live in that neighborhood, because there are very good people that live in the neighborhood. The problems that come in that neighborhood come from outside, folk that don't live in the neighborhood. And he said, "I didn't know all this stuff was back there." And I thought to myself, "How could you live in this city and not see this and pass by it every day and not wonder how I can make a difference as a city official?" Simply put, we're asking you tonight to take a look at the geography and look at the opportunity to help correct what's going wrong.
Best, thank you. You three have time, in about two weeks, I would like to walk you through about four projects, and if you don't mind a block at a time, we'll approach it from that side. Thank you, gentlemen.
That makes me, that alone, just there, that, just you stating that alone gives me some hope that we will make some progress somewhere down this line. And I don't mean to guard at this time, but to not even be from here. I'm passionate about this city. I could leave and go home tomorrow, go back to South Carolina.
You're from here, you have 16 years of experience.
I love where I'm at. I was supposed to stay here one year and leave, and I've been here 16 years now because of the call of the people, and it hurts me to still be in the same spot. And we can swing an axe all day long, but it takes an opportunity for us to come together to the table and actually make a difference.
So, but last statement too, in defense of Mark as well, Mark and I have talked with Wiesel Baker three or four times, not with the statements that you made, but with opportunity. City owns part of the lineup, they have a talent, owns part of that lineup, but out there, that tells you right there, there's room for opportunity, room for growth, and room to sprout a community right there. I think that'd be a good opportunity, a good walking tour as well. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Before we leave, I have a question I want to ask. You have a question about the presentation?
You can.
Thank you. Captain Robinson, I was just listening to what he was talking about, you wanted to like partner with the city of Valdosta, and you were saying something about you were going to apply for funds from the city as well as the federal government. Now, I'm trying to understand, you want to get this funding so that you can set up, your organization can set up a satellite area or something to help the underprivileged or those who have not gathered a lot of, you know, funds and everything, in that, in a certain area? You're trying to get, be a partnership with us so that you can be able to, I guess, like I look at a lot of the newspapers, I see how other people are always giving grants or giving support to help these organizations, and is that what we're kind of looking at, so you can get something like a grant or a bonus, something that you can do?
Well, they may go long, shoot a very short, they said, "We want to ask the city to petition, to petition the federal government for $250 million for the city, not for the People's Tribune, for the city, and to help speed up the progression as far as the foreign U-jection plan, the plan that you have to revitalize the city." And we want you to petition for $250 million for the city, not for our organization.
Okay, you want the city to make that motion or action and go to the federal government?
Yes.
So we can provide for a set, I guess, say for a set areas?
Yes, for the South Side, for the South Side.
The underserved area that hasn't gotten a lot of things, it should be?
Yes, the underprivileged, the underprivileged areas, and help, they're beside it, the city need to grow up today.
Do you have any ideas, like there's some things you want to do to educate them or help them with their health and everything like that, or you got projects that you think?
Well, I think that right now, so, little bit, when you, when you traveling from the South, and you come to the Patterson Bridge, you don't have a Patterson Bridge, and you look to the North, you see pure prosperity, and when you look around and around, you see pure poverty. I think that avenue in there, you know, where you mind if you can run you, because I think that need to be a tolerant area. I understand in the back of the spit bowl or something that we be playing, but we want to speed up the process, that's why we want to request that the city act for $250 million for the city, not for our organization.
But I'm thinking you want to place specific area, you want to be specific.
Yes, 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 for the South Side.
On the South, on the South area, the South, yeah, a lot of it.
The low income area, so if we can put a curb and put a, put a turn. I have a lot more, one to say. I have a lot more wanting to say, but you got a long agenda here tonight. And we can discuss this differently, and I have something here that I give to your attorney, and it's from our attorney. And I can pass this to somebody.
May I have you explain South Side?
The South Side? Well, according to, I would ask that same question, explaining the South Side and the need that we have about Martin. If the South Side is, you defined it as representative of the city, I know you know what the South Side is. It's the three districts, District one, District two, and District three. And that's what Martin Martin was entitled as the South Side. So we had him, he asked the same question. And him being the manager, I know that he know, and I know that you guys know what the South Side is. And we know that the determination is based upon what he gave the description of, and that is the area which has been elected, and it'll be mostly the South Side of the city.
I look at it as the East of Lee Street as well, so.
The underserved area, not just the South Side, I say underserved area, you're addressing a city.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Better reference. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, Title II, let's look over your packets and be ready to approve the minutes on Thursday. Item three, ordinances and resolutions, consideration of a resolution formally adopted, twenty twenty-one, joint comprehensive plan. Mark will present. Patrick, you're going.